So on A, your recommendation is just get it reviewed by the Commissioners Court?
Correct. The court will hear all proposals and then they will come back on Thursday. The court will come back the next day, on Thursday, and make the recommendation and vote.
So this year, no comment, your recommendation?
Correct.
Okay, we're gonna make all these motions separate, A, B, and C. Each one has something different. I'll make the motion on A to approve reviewing it by Commissioners Court. I'll say.
Do we need to do all this stuff for, you think, that's a separate item? Or can you just capture all, but you can capture everything you want, A, B, and C? Just do it down?
Each one has something different.
Want to do it different?
It's up to you, Jeff.
I care however you want to do it. Go ahead with your motion.
Let's go with A only, I guess. It's already made, it's second.
Okay, all in favor say aye. Any opposition? None, A carries five zero. B. Date and time of broker agent presentation, question and answer session if necessary. And we're gonna open those on what day? It's like the 22nd?
We open them on Wednesday, the 22nd.
So that's when we're gonna do that?
Yes.
So that would be the date and time, huh?
What time?
Nine AM, or you wanna say, I mean, court starts at nine?
Nine. Motion on that?
Please.
Okay, make a motion to approve Wednesday, the 22nd, at nine AM, for the broker and agent presentation, questions, answers sessions if necessary.
I'll say. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? None. Motion on B is five zero. Number C, you will see, excuse me, is date and time of employment, it's proposed no later than Monday, August 27th. And we just looked at that and I asked once on the 24th, I was requesting the 10 AM Thursday, between Thursday, we could do it that way.
You're gonna make it nine or 10?
Oh, I don't care.
Because it said you changed it. 10?
Well, he said 10.
Well, I've just copied, I didn't know it was on Friday, but since it's a different day, we're making it a nine, if you wanna get it over?
We can do it at 10. You know, I just see if I have a project schedule.
Okay.
But that's, we can do it at 10. Yeah.
Okay, in reference to item number 15 on the agenda, I make a motion to approve C, the date and time of employee benefits proposed were no later than the 23rd of August at 10 AM.
Just remove the no later than, make your motion. Remove no later than, because that is what we're gonna do.
You're not saying the date and time, you're not saying.
I'll say 3:00 to 10:00.
Yes. All in favor say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries five zero. Number 16 is consideration and action on an order calling a bond election for the construction and equipping of a new county jail, including a sheriff's office and courtroom. And I put that on there. What that is, is we've been working with Lorraine, we've accepted proposals for a new jail in Florence County. And I don't remember when we opened those, Lorraine, do you? You can come up, I don't mind working on a few. Do you remember when we accepted those?
The accepted what?
When we hired you for the jail, or when we?
Oh, when we accepted the proposals and?
Yes.
It was earlier in the year.
Right at the beginning of the year. Right at the beginning of the year, somewhere in there. Anyway, the cost of, the approximate cost of a jail in Florence County for a 48-bed jail, it's the one that Pete and the sheriff have been looking for, and the new incoming sheriff is coming with that, approximately $6.5 million to $7 million for a 48-bed jail. And just something that large, what I was looking at first as I was trying to make a decision, I thought it might be something that you might want to take to the voters. And that's when we had Denise Chaney from Bickerstaff, he can go out and review the contract, which will be on here next. I don't know how we want to do that, we might want to look at that first, so everybody will understand the contractual purposes. But rather than us make a decision to spend $7 million, since we've got an election coming up in November, I had put on here to allow the voters to be able to make that decision if they wanted to spend that money or not.
Very good.
Excuse me?
I agree with you on that.
Well, what if this bond election doesn't pass, what are we gonna do with the property that we've already bought and they cashed the check for?
I don't have that on the agenda, I only have the jail part on there.
They cashed the check.
I'd like to stay with the agenda.
I know, and we're going out for a bond election for a new jail, we've already bought the property. So I'm just asking.
I'd have to get some money somewhere else to build a jail.
I agree with it, since it's gonna be so much money, we should leave it up to the contract or this.
Yeah, the amount it is, I feel like the people have the right to charge it. We have.
I mean, I haven't seen the contract, but does it say in the contract, if the bond, in the event that the bond election passes, we will purchase this property? But no, we already purchased the property, now we're going out for a bond election, you see, and it may not pass.
As far as you can, can't sit around and do nothing, you have to make.
Well, I know you worked on that a lot, Pete, all I'm saying is, woulda, coulda, shoulda, maybe we shouldn't have put that in the contract that, depending on whether or not the bond election passes, maybe we should just put earnest money down on the contract for that property and not actually pay for that property.
That's too late now.
Yeah, well, I understand.
You could've asked at the.
I.
But what's on the agenda today? That's not on the agenda. What's on the agenda today is to discuss approve, disapprove, and, I mean, excuse me, consideration and action on an order calling a bond election for the construction and equipping of a new county jail, which would include a sheriff's office and a courtroom. And we are looking at approximately $7 million, and that's what we're looking at today. And I don't, I think $7 million is just a big number from Florence County regardless of how much money we have pending.
Right, I understand. Now, I have been told before by the constituents that right as we go off a bond election, they voters in here for us to make the decisions, but on something at this, this high, I think we do need a bond election.
It's a minimal cost for us to do the bond election, we already have an election coming up in November.
We can put it right, we can slide it around.
Right, Carol? So here's our bonds from Bickerstaff, he can, he can go out over here.
We need an action, right? Okay, I'm, I guess I'll go ahead and, I'll make it, I'll make the motion to approve action on an order in, calling a bond election for the construction and equipment of a new county jail, including a sheriff's office and courtroom.
All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposition? No opposition? Motion carries five zero. Number 17 is to discuss approve, disapprove, owner-architect agreement for the Florence County Jail, and that's Lorraine. You have, in your package, you have that. You have an AIA document, it's a Z1, 2007 on top, if you picked up your packages, you've seen this. You'll see there's the original AIA agreement on top. And you will see on pages to follow, there have been some amendments that have been made to this AIA agreement. The amendments have been made in, myself, Lorraine, I believe Pete's talked to Lorraine, you've all talked with Denise Chaney to iron out any wrinkles that we might have in the contract, to ensure that the county is protected and that Lorraine is meeting her requirements. Is that correct, Lorraine?
That's correct.
One thing in particular that I asked about was liability, Lorraine's liability, her contract says $250,000, I don't know if that was enough for a $7 million job, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so she will get additional insurance up to a million dollars, and so a cost is about $250,000 a year, roughly, and I'm sure that would, to a $5,000 protection, be the cost.
And there have been made provisions in this contract that if the bond election does, does fail or does not pass, that Lorraine will only charge us for work done to date. This is not something that we are held to if there is no bond election, is that correct, Lorraine?
That is correct.
And that's some of the percentages in there, that we discussed and come up with, she collects so much money, instead of saying, I think 10% of the $7 million, it shows just to get a percentage in, it's defined in there, I want you to go through it.
And also, I, when we were working through with Denise, Denise said that Lorraine was very workable and agreed any amendment that we had as the county.
This property that we?
The property's not on the agenda.
That we purchased from the mill is on our insurance, we already added it to our?
I'm sorry, you gotta stay with the agenda, and the property's not on the agenda. The, what's on the agenda is if we want to go forth with the AIA contract to build a jail, or to sign that. It says discuss approve, disapprove, owner-architect agreement for the Florence County Jail.
Does that mean Commissioners don't have a right to discuss anything to do with?
No, you should, you should call, if these packages have been ready for you for three days, you should've came and looked into it. But that's not it, but I don't have the property on the jail today.
But are you saying that I can't say anything other than?
We need to know what we're gonna do with the?
On the what?
Discuss approve, disapprove, owner-architect agreement for Florence County Jail, that's the agenda item. Will you look through your agreement and see if you don't have any questions regarding this agreement?
Hell, I have reviewed it and, of course, I've discussed it with Denise Chaney, who reviewed the insurance policy, the contract for us. I thank you very much, everything covered that we, Auburn and I asked, get covered in our expressions, I agree with Lorraine, so I'd make motion to approve this.
All in favor say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries five zero. Number 18 on the agenda is to discuss approve, disapprove, authorizing daily and superior architects to engage as geotechnical engineers of borings at the new jail site, not to exceed $10,000, but up to eight borings, and that's Lorraine.
As we put together your budget to, for your bond election, we need to have a certain amount of information and work done so that we can solidify the numbers for the cost. We do need to have those geotechnical borings, we, the survey is almost complete, we've located the building now on the site, and it's time to go ahead and get the borings, and especially with all of the drilling going on, the, you know, getting drillers out, there's a timeframe in getting them out there, so we need to get on their list to go ahead and get the geotechnical borings done. So we have a not-to-exceed price of, of the $10,000 for up to eight borings, and we'll be doing two borings for the paving, two for the jail area, two in the admin area, and outdoor exercises, and one where the Sally Port is, because those represent the four different defined types of loads that we will be imposing from our buildings.
And how far down do these borings go?
They range between 20 and 40 feet, and the structural engineer gives the geotechnical engineer the location of the borings, and then they discuss the depths between themselves based on the soil conditions and based on the loads. And that's why we have the four different categories, because the loads will be different in those different areas.
I make motion to approve authorizing daily superior architects to engage in a geotechnical engineer for borings at the new jail site, not to exceed $10,000 for up to eight borings. I'll say.
All in favor say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries five zero. Number 19 is to discuss approve, disapprove, using project contingency funds for Ostec Roofing Consultants to inspect the Florence County courthouse, phase one roof installation, cost is $1,475 to the offer of Lorraine Daly.
On this item, we have several transitions between your copper and your slate roofing that, if it was a brand-new building and a new roof, those details are real tricky and they really wouldn't have even been designed into the building, but since we're restoring back the building to its original state, we, they have, those transitions are there. They are, they're complicated, and, and I feel like they're, it's important to make sure that we have a roofing consultant that can inspect those and make sure that we have watertight conditions in those, in those transitions. The good thing about this is if we do it on this, the, you know, side of the building that we're restoring now, we have the same details that will be happening over on the other side, so we'll already have the detail inspected and approved. But I think $1,475 is, is a good insurance to make sure that those details are flashed properly and we don't have any potential problems with leaks. A slate roofing and your copper roofing are both long-lasting roofing items, and those details are the areas where you could have potential problems. And the Texas Historical Commission has said that it would be an approved expense that could be, you know, reimbursed as part of, you know, they pay their 60%, and you pay your 30, or 66, 33, whatever that split is.
She was here earlier.
Yes, I believe she is here.
Yeah, so I agree.
Ostec is acceptable?
They, they specialize in, in recon inspections, yes, sir. And he, they're recommended by a gentleman that just does only building envelopes, and that's his expertise, and so I called him and asked him who he would recommend for this particular type of detail, and he's recommended Ostec.
I'll make the motion to approve using project contingency funds for Ostec Roofing Consultants to inspect Florence County courthouse, phase one roof installation, cost is $1,475. I'll say.
All in favor say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries five zero. Number 20 is to discuss authorize daily superior architects to engage Chapman Engineering to, A, review TCEQ files and review TCEQ staff related to the cleanup done at the new jail site in 2008, and B, perform a site visit of the jail site to provide written report and recommendations on any remedial steps that may be necessary prior to starting construction, and C, fee for these services will be $2,700 off of Lorraine Daly.
This has to do with the jail site and the fact that, of the, the history of the jail site. We have talked to our civil engineer, and subsequently he recommended that we talk to Chapman Engineering, they're out of Bernie, Texas. They have, for the last 22 years, specialized in environmental engineering, they are, Mr. Chapman is an environmental engineer, and he has done hundreds of phase one, phase two environmental site assessments and remedial and cleanup on sites. The concern, when I read through the TCEQ report that was done back in 2008, it did clear the site for being next to a park, but it didn't necessarily have the words in, it was clear for, you know, new construction. And I feel like the prudent thing to do to make sure there's no potential liability in the future on the counties, to the county, is to get the site cleared by an environmental engineer. And so I sent the 2008 report to Mr. Chapman, he reviewed it, and he responded back with the steps that he would recommend, which is to, you know, the items A and B on the agenda, and at that time, he will do a report for us and recommend any additional steps that may need to be taken, such as soil sampling and then any potential remediation. This fee for these first two steps is the $2,700, and, and again, I would propose that we get that done, because we need to know what the cost of the jail is, and this item could impact the overall budget, which is what I'm trying to put together for your bond election.
Stanley, what was the scope of the cleaning that's done at the jail site in 2008?
Well, essentially, TCEQ hired a contractor and they came in and they removed any herbicides and chemicals that, that they found on the site.
Is that what they found, herbicides and?
It's my understanding, but that's, again, why I hired Mr. Chapman, because as an architect, some of these items, I believe, didn't even have, they were old enough that they didn't have the safety data sheets anymore, so they had to get into the chemical compound and break those down. But it's my understanding they were herbicides, and nothing that, for Mr. Chapman's initial review of the TCEQ report, there was nothing alarming, in his opinion, based on his 22 years' experience.
So none, none of this pesticide or whatever had leaked onto the soil?
Well, that we don't know, we, that's why we're hiring him, to come in and look at the initial report, do his inspection, and then he will make recommendations based on what he sees, what steps need to be taken, if any, on testing.
In my special with the TCEQ man, he said, well, we removed it and we tested the area, but he didn't do extensive testing of the whole area, but they will do, if I stand right, Chapman will take various soil samples in the area.
He will recommend, after he does this first step, then he would come back in and recommend where, how many, and what depth, and what soil samples we need to take. So the step one is to do the initial analysis. There were a couple pieces of the 2008 report attachments that were missing, and so he needs to go track those down, they weren't included in the package that I had received and forwarded to him. So he just, he needs to do his homework on it, he needs to visit the site, and then he will make recommendations on, on the next step, which will be to, we believe, to take sampling and, and review the.
This is in no way boring, this is just soil sampling, like you would do before you fertilize your field, is that right, Pete? Do we have any plans to do a phase one and a phase two environmental study, like bore down 25 or 30 feet and?
Well, that's what we just asked, we have, we have none.
No, no, that's geotechnical.
We'll find out.
That would be wholly resulting on his.
What he finds.
What he finds.
Then we may have.
We don't know what the next prudent step is, because he needs to go out and tell us, as the expert, he needs to go out, he needs to find the missing attachments from the TCEQ, he needs to interview that staff, he needs to wrap his head around exactly what has been done or what's been found today, so he gets to familiarizes himself with the history, which is essentially what a phase one, a phase one investigates and collects data, and then a phase two makes recommendations for cleanup if the data shows that there's need for it. So essentially, he's going to be performing similar services to a phase one, but since so much work has already been done, a full-bone phase one would be over $5,000, a lot of that work's already been done, so he's essentially crediting you on that, because you don't need that. What you need, you already know that, the history, you know that there were some herbicides there, and we need him to come in and tell us what the next step is. That, that's all we're doing here. Then I'll come before you after he does his report and, and tell you what he recommends based on, on his findings, or he may come in and tell you, or report directly to you, because you may have technical questions that you need to ask him, and then that will be when we talk about sampling, how deep, how extensive, et cetera.
Well, I believe Humberto Martinez, that is named, it's a project manager, I believe he said, the last thing you want to do is build a jail on a virgin piece of property, and that it was his recommendation that you do not only a phase one, but also a phase two environmental study, to ensure that, that the groundwater and the soil, because given the history of that site, and it's not a virgin piece of land.
Carol, will you tone it out for a second?
There was, you know, herbicides, pesticides, fertilizer, da-da-da-da-da, and that thing is probably a lot older than you and I are, right? I mean, that, that site?
He didn't recommend you do a phase one, do a three, he recommended that we get TCEQ clearance, and that's just.
Well, I think a lending institution may, if you're gonna borrow money on a piece of property, they're gonna dictate to you, because they want to make sure that that piece of property that they're loaning you money on is clear and free of all debt and contamination.
And I do talk to.
We might not have any way around that.
I do talk to Beto on this, and what he told me is, based on the TCEQ cleanup and clearance, that USDA was comfortable with the site, because that's the first thing I asked him, is how do they feel about it?
Well, I am too, until, until somebody bores down there, because when you spill something, it's like on a carpet, you, the top is dry and there's nothing there, but you go the padding underneath here, I mean, everything gravitates down, I mean, everybody knows that.
This is the, my recommendation, this is the first step of what you need to do to try to get, to make sure that, that all of your due diligence is done on the site, is to get the environmental engineer, which is the expert, to come out and review the site and tell us what we need to do next. And give us a report.
Make motion to make action on authorizing daily superior's architect engagement, Chapman Engineering to review TCEQ, interview TCEQ staff related to cleanup done at the new jail site in 2008, B, perform site visits to the jails, provide written reports and recommendations on the remedial, remedial steps that may be necessary prior to starting the construction, C, fee for these services will be $2,700. I'll say.
All in favor say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries five zero. Number 21, discussing a possible action, authorizing the general approval of the negotiation of a tax abatement agreement between Florence County Energy Transfer for improvements made to property located in a 40-acre reinvestment zone, in accordance with the tax, Florence County tax, made in guidelines and criteria in chapter 311 of the Tax Code. Special Counsel Ross Fisher, the chair, at a previous Commissioners Court meeting, it was requested that Mr. Fisher be the person that work on these abatements for these companies and our, and reimburse, the energy services companies, we're gonna reimburse Florence County for Mr. Fisher's counsel, is that correct, Mr. Fisher?
That's correct, Your Honor. Good morning, Your Honor and Commissioners. Thank you. I'm here on the county's behalf, on the county's special counsel in this matter, it is subject to reimbursement agreement, so the energy transfer, y'all have authorized an reimbursement agreement where they will reimburse the county for my representation of you. The first step, they have filed two tax abatement applications, and just by way of background, they're operating under your guidelines and criteria that were in place in February of this year, which is when the application was made, so those are the criteria that, that they're going to be governed by. The first step for granting a tax abatement, procedural step is to create a reinvestment zone, and that's what you did the last time I was here, you created a 40-acre reinvestment zone and a 320-acre reinvestment zone, and not only is that the first step for whether, if you decide you want to consider a tax abatement, but it's also the procedural step that allows energy transfer to go do a deal with the school districts. And my understanding is they made some progress on doing what's, basically, it's a value of appraisal freeze of their property values, and they've, they've done that with the Pettis ISD and the Kennedy ISD, and I'll let their attorney tell you more about that. For your standpoint, they've asked, today's item, do you notice the language, says general approval and negotiation of a tax abatement agreement? To formally adopt a tax abatement agreement, you have to have the agreement in front of you, and you have to send it to every other taxing entity on seven days' notice. So what the energy transfer, it asked me to put on the agenda, is basically a general discussion to decide whether, to see whether a majority of you supported a tax abatement agreement. If there is consensus that you want to pursue it, or the granting of tax abatement agreement to energy transfer on either or both of these properties, then you can indicate that today, but we would have to, I would go negotiate an agreement on your behalf and bring it back to you to make sure that you were comfortable with it. And then that would have to be sent to school districts, presiding officer, the hospital district, providing officer, all your river authorities, any taxing entities that are within the county would get notice of that, and then they'd have an opportunity to review the draft agreement and be here and express themselves. So this isn't a final deal today, but really rather see, to determine whether a majority of you want to pursue this. The big issue is if you decide to authorize and negotiate some tax payment agreement, obviously, or how long is it gonna be for, what percentage of the value are you going to abate in each year, and then what kind of recapture terms? The statute says that if, you have to have a provision in a tax payment agreement that says if they don't make the improvements, then you get your money back. And then it goes on to say, you may have a provision in there, that if they don't create the jobs they say they're gonna create, you recapture that money, so then they have to refund any abated money. And so those are, that's kind of typically where the lawyers do the negotiating, is trying to figure out recapture terms that are acceptable to both sides. So, as a general, just generally, I reviewed their proposal, I think that they sent you a proposal in late July, that kind of talks about the broad parameters, how long an abatement term they're asking for, it features a, it goes from 75, 75%, I believe, in the first year to 30%, so it, it steps down with each passing year, the amount of the abatement that they're requesting. From my standpoint, it falls within the guidelines that were in place in February when they made their application, so it's within what you have authorized as being acceptable in Florence County. So this is a, this is an opportunity, I think, energy transfer, Mr. Schum's my counterpart, who's over there at energy transfer, and I'm sure there's folks from their company who are here to talk to you and ask questions, but if you have any questions of me about the process, chapter 312, I'm here to answer those.
I prefer your cell phone number, sir, if you could. I, I prefer your cell phone number, sir, if you could.
My cellphone? It's on my card, but I'm out of cards.
Oh, well, this is just a general approval that we've got, sort of, in the state, right now. Right? Well, this is just a general approval for the tax payment. It's not nothing agreeing on today.
It would be, it would basically be saying that you are interested in...
In interested in what they got.
In their terms of their proposal, probably good to hear from them and say, ask them questions without this going over. But yes, any formal, final tax abatement contract would have to come back to you after, after a cop drafts for $100 taxes.
Counselor, this just means we're entertaining the idea.
Correct.
Is that my language?
That's correct. I'll turn it over to Mr. Shum. That's what, I, my impression was they...
Your Honor, yes, it, it, I'd be happy to summarize some of the thoughts.
They were looking for their general direction.
I see you moving, but I didn't...
Sure, 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 sure. Well, ju- just to clarify some of the positions that, um, weren't, uh, necessarily articulated last time we came before the court. Um, we've provided some general summary, uh, information about the...
Ross, will you listen to him so we'll be on the same page? Thank you.
Uh, we've, yes, ma'am, we've, we've provided some general summary information about the KDB plant and the Kennedy plant. Uh, and there were some things that we wanted to focus on as part of our abatement request. And the abatement request was essentially, um, taken from the guidelines of Karnes County at the point at which they were still in approval. And then, uh, we, we stepped backwards and we, we tendered a, uh, not an offer necessarily, but some figures that we thought would be fair, uh, and a good starting point for discussion. So that's essentially what we hope to accomplish today, is determine the level of interest in the court. And then if the court decides that by a majority vote they would like to pursue something like this, then we could, uh, rely on Mr. Fisher and, and representatives of Energy Transfer to come to some type of agreement. And then, uh, a couple of new items, uh, that we wanted to stress, uh, in relation to both projects are the ideas of eligible versus ineligible investment. And so in the, the information that we gave to you, fortunately, we don't have page numbers, but on page three, where at the top where it says eligible versus ineligible investment.
You'll look at it, there's a paper in your file, you guys, if you set it with them. It's called Duff and Phelps. That was referring to, it's in Chapter 212, the property tax abatement for post-transport KDB Karnes County. It looks like this on top, it's a Duff and Phelps.
So that's, that's the actual formalized request that, that we sent in late July that you referenced.
So July 24, 2012, one, is that the same date you're referring to?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And, and all of the, the, um, parameters of the projects have stayed the same. Essentially, you're looking at 40 acres versus 320 acres. All the jobs are the same, all the capital investments are the same. Uh, but what we wanted to stress was the amount of, uh, capital investment that Energy Transfer was putting in the county that would not be subject to abatement. Because we've, we've drawn very clear lines around the reinvestment zones like we did last time. Uh, and there will be trunk line, pipeline, uh, movable assets, um, things that aren't fixed assets that go inside the reinvestment zone that would be fully and completely taxable, um, by any standard, regardless of an abatement. So what goes in the zone, according to the eligible versus ineligible investment table of the KDB plant, is $80 million worth of capital investment. Uh, what falls outside the zone is $112 million worth of capital investment. So the total for the KDB plant is about $192 million. So they've, they've only requested abatement on a, a small percentage of that, which would be the $80 million worth of investment. Uh, similarly, the Kennedy plant, we, we haven't gotten final figures for ineligible investment because they continue to add, you know, CapEx plans, and they, they haven't finalized those. Uh, but what, what we know today is that $115 million worth of eligible investment has been requested, and there, there is an, an open-ended, um, discussion on the amount of investment that would go in total. Uh, and, and the way these things typically work, especially with Energy Transfer, is, uh, with, with a company this big and with a company that's made recent acquisitions, uh, everything goes to the board level with an AR, an appropriations request. And so that speaks to the competitive nature of the project. And, and appropriations request, uh, needs to be approved based on certain things like, will, uh, a county work with a company based on what we plan to do there? So if we plan this capital investment, is it possible that we could get a, a tax payment agreement in place? Um, will they help us with workforce hiring needs? Um, is the county replete with good infrastructure and, and good water and good roads? So there are a lot of things that have to be decided when a site location decision like this is made. And so the, the, the name of the KDB plant emphasizes the competitive nature of this project. Karnes, Dewitt, and B counties were considered this plan. There, there's a, there's a train, um, that will process gas from a number of these different places and pull it all together in one place. And, uh, when the site selection process was underway, um, that, that, uh, that plant really could have gone in any number of three counties.
Now, I see, I don't see Dewitt's on here, I see B's.
Yes, ma'am. So Dewitt and B are mentioned under the page, uh, three, Phase Three Expansion, which should be a couple pages past that. And at the, the title at the top is Potential Phase Three Expansion. So that was the, the second point that I wanted to make today, is that, uh, the, the, the main reason why Karnes County would consider an abatement for a company like this is because, um, on top of what they have already proposed, there is the potential for an additional expansion to come along in a Phase Three. So essentially, Phase One is the refrigeration plant and all of the associated infrastructure that comes with that plant. Uh, Phase Two is the cryogenic processing and operations that come with the refrigeration plant in Phase Two. And then Phase Three would be an additional cryogenic processing facility, which would, you know, potentially be paid by Phase One and Phase Two's installation.
As a general rule of thumb, the, the greater the abatement, the greater your investment? Or are y'all willing to step up a little bit, uh, your investment according to the, the abatement?
Yes, sir. Well, as, as a general rule, um, abatements are used as incentives to incentivize companies to maximize their capital investment in a particular place. So in answer to your question, generally speaking, yes, um, the higher the abatement, the, the more the company is incentivized to invest in that one area. So for instance, the competitive nature of economic development projects is such that counties compete with each other, and one county may offer more, one county may offer less, one county may say, well, we'll help you in other ways, you know, more intangibles, and, and that sort of thing, factors into a company's site location decision. And, and I can assure you that Energy Transfer is, is big enough at this point to where they're looking at, at multiple places in Texas, um, for investment. And, and in those areas, you will have competitive scenarios develop between taxing jurisdictions for, for those investments.
I think there was some discussion of, of that last time you were here.
Yes, sir.
Have y'all started construction already?
The, the, the sites have been delineated by fence and initial grading and siding. Um, some of the equipment has begun to be delivered and assembled on site. Um, the, the fixed and permanent nature of the site, I can't really speak to, but, um, it, it is, um, it would be safe to say that, that a lay-down yard and the sites have been fully created in, in preparation for a full investment. Yes, sir, but I, I can't speak to the amount of site work that's already been done.
So if we were to give y'all a tax abatement, what are y'all going to bring back, give back to the county?
Well, it's a great question. That's the, the crux of the whole issue, is, uh, the creation of nearly 25, I think it's 22 or 23, permanent full-time jobs paying above the average county wage. Um, the, the creation of, um, new fixed investment on the ground. Uh, we're talking hundreds of millions of dollars in total, uh, of which a very small percentage would be eventually abated. Um, the economic impact of the wages in the community is considered to be substantial by any measure, so everybody's going out and spending more. But the, the big unknown is what other companies, um, tool manufacturers, leasing companies, housing companies, come in after the creation of one of these types of plants and do business, uh, in, in association with Energy Transfer. So what we call those ancillary jobs and ancillary capital investment.
That's kind of the domino effect. Nobody wants to go first, or...
Right. Right, so, so the lowest potential scenario would be a one-to-one job creation scenario, where you would have Energy Transfer create one job, and one other job would prove to be created somewhere else in the community. Um, some scenarios, uh, for extremely high wages go as high as six to one. So it, it, it kind of varies, and, you know, there would have to be a, an economic impact study commissioned either by Duff and Phelps or somebody else. But it's safe to say that multiple jobs will be created in the community as a result of one Energy Transfer job. And that's generally the way, the way it goes with primary or manufacturing jobs. And essentially, you are manufacturing something, you're taking gas, and you're manufacturing it into a product that can be shipped out of state or, or consumed in the state.
And this will be a continuing business even after the actual drilling has ceased?
Yes, ma'am, thank you, I, I appreciate that. So, um, another point that, that we should make is that this is a 25 to 30-year operation, typically with a life expectancy of these types of plants. Uh, and, and, uh, one of the things that's worth note is, when you build a plant like this, there will be a significant amount of construction traffic, trucks coming in with materials and actually building something. But then once that goes away, the truck traffic is essentially minimal. Uh, and that's the case for both plants. So you would have all the materials come in, you would have the construction, and then after that, it's really just light-duty maintenance vehicles coming in for inspections and maintenance, and you wouldn't have any of the big rigs because everything comes and goes by a, a trunk line and pipeline.
That you're expecting last time, right?
I'm sorry?
That's what you were saying the last time?
Yes, sir, yeah. Yeah, so there, there is no, uh, oil and gas ingress or egress through truck. It's, it's, it's all just, uh, pipeline.
What kind of qualifications do these jobs have for the people? I mean, would you be hiring, because the educational level of the community is, is not exceptionally high. Would you be bringing these people in from outside to the job to be fit?
Well, the, the, I would assume that, um, and we've talked to Energy Transfer about this, their primary goal is to hire within the community.
But that's not likely to happen if we don't have people who are qualified.
Well, one of the reasons this site was chosen was because you do have qualified people. There are lots of people here that have expertise in oil and gas, a lot of people that have extra...
Yeah, there are a lot of people that are back and forth to Valera if I'm here.
Sure, sure. I mean, it's, 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 you know, you, you, I, I guess you can't think of, um, something too localized in just Karnes City, but Karnes County is how the, the company tends to think of it. Assets and, and human resources coming from all sides of the county. And so the, the answer to your question is, it's going to be a mix. And, you know, um, educational attainment will range probably from, um, you know, high school diploma to, um, qualified four-year degree engineers.
And, and where's the closest plant to the best that we would be, let's say, pulling qualified people from?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I don't think I...
You were saying that there were qualified people, let's say, at, at the plant and so forth. And so I'm, I'm asking, that's, that's a petrochemical plant, but is it similar in nature to the plants that y'all built?
Well, these, these plants process natural gas. In other words, it's, it's basically using, um, the, the physical properties of, of heat and cold to separate liquids and separate natural gas liquids, um, into useful products. And so you need somebody that's familiar with, uh, how to run, um, how to run plants, how to repair plants, how to properly maintain plants. So it, it's, uh, it's anybody that can fulfill those duties. And they feel like this is a great place to get that talent, it's just one of them.
Can you start with 23?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. And then, uh, that's, that's what Energy Transfer has authorized us to commit to on paper. It could go higher, it won't go lower without penalty, um, by virtue of the, of the abatement, the agreement with Karnes County. Uh, but that doesn't take into account any of the people that are hired under an ancillary nature with other businesses that come in as a result of Energy Transfer. So Energy Transfer needs, um, you know, they, they need people to, to make tools for them, they need people to lease them property, they need people to, uh, insure their assets, they need all kinds of things that a business would need. And, and when those needs are expressed, um, they're typically fulfilled by other companies coming in and filling that vacuum.
I think we just, let me open a question. Uh, on the tax structure, on the abate ribs...
Yes, sir.
Uh, right now, that property is agriculture, agricultural, right? So the tax structure is a lot less, is that right, Brandon?
Well, the, the company has asked us to perform an analysis on the agricultural rollback that's going to happen, so, uh, they'll be required to pay property tax on, um, the difference between what the agricultural rate would have been, or the rate with the agricultural exemption versus the rate that it is now. And I think that's subject to five or seven years worth of back taxes? Is it five?
Five.
Yeah, so, so the company will pay those five years of back taxes.
And then, uh, when it becomes from agriculture to industrial, the industrial tax rate is higher than agriculture, so we would be bringing more money in to the county through taxes, just the property tax, even with the abatement.
That's correct, yes, sir. Yeah, the agricultural exemption, uh, does a, a significant amount of property tax production, so the company would then, uh, and, and this is on an ongoing basis, obviously, they, they wouldn't get that agricultural exemption back, um, they would be paying the difference perpetuity. Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall, would you have a question?
Well, I, he said that $112 million worth would be taken off the tax base, and $80 million worth would be taxable. That, that is a bit of a, of a difference and a variance there. And, and my question is, when you say that it's subject to go to the other counties, why would you have already engaged in construction in this county if indeed this wasn't where you wanted it in the first place?
Well, the, the idea is that the expansion is open for negotiation. And the expansion is really the, the, establishing a foothold in the county is important, and then deciding where to expand capacity is something altogether different. And so what we're essentially talking about is a, a way for Karnes County to incentivize the potential Phase Three expansion, so that the additional capital investment in the county.
What is the need for the tax abatement from companies of this sort? From my understanding, I don't understand, when you have $1 billion in revenue in the first six months of 2012, and you just purchased a Sunoco, Suneco, oil and gas petroleum for over $500 million, what is the incentive to come in small counties like this who are trying to gather up just some money to fix our roads and ask for tax abatements?
That's, that's exactly what the, the company does with additional capital. They, they invest it in purchasing other companies, they expand their footprint in Texas. Um, basically, the, the, um, absorption of some of these other companies will result in job creation in communities where it's never been before. And the, the, the three main ways in which they reinvest capital is pay their people more, get better people, um, they engage in research and development to find new ways to get money, uh, new ways to get, um, oil and gas product out of the ground and get that to market with new fracking technologies and things like that. I mean, that, that sort of thing would never have come along if the companies didn't have additional capital to invest, uh, and then returning value to their shareholders. So if anybody in the, in the room owns a mutual fund, chances are you probably own some oil and gas in that mutual fund.
I'm not concerned about the shareholders, I'm concerned about the, the infrastructure of our county.
Right.
And, and the fact that, that the, the rural people that are suffering with the infrastructure, you know, from these companies right now, are not getting any tax abatements.
We totally agree. And actually, I'd like to invite, um, uh, at least one or two members of Energy Transfer up to talk about some of the improvements that they've made proactively. These, these have not been at the request of the county, these have been things that they've done to go out of their way and, and get it, get in, um, just, as, as a way to show, um, that, that they're participating in this community in a way in which a corporate, responsible corporate citizen would. Um, they've invested at least $200,000 in road improvements, next of KDB plant, which is County Road 124, County Road 124 from the, from the, the site up to Highway 72. And then, uh, roughly $300,000 is promised to be spent on the Kennedy plant for road improvements outside that plant. And so those, uh, those agreements, um, well, those, uh, those, um, that, that projected spending, in the case of KDB, it's already been spent, in the case of the Kennedy plant, it will be spent, uh, was done without Energy Transfer having to talk to anybody in the county. And it was done, um, in an effort to try and lead things better than they found it. So, uh, essentially, once the construction phase is over, th- this company will have minimal impact on the roads, no more so than really any other business operating in the county.
What about oil and pollution?
Uh, I don't think any of the, the actual product escapes from the facility. I mean, it, it, it should be minimal. I mean, there's, there's not really any, um, uh, all of the environmental impact, um, the, the, the environmental impact, uh, has been evaluated by, by the state folks that govern that sort of thing at TCEQ, and, and it's passed all of the regulations. So there's nothing that really, um, represents a hazard to the community. It's all self-contained.
So, Mr. Shum, I would like to ask for a discussion across the act of authorizing the general improvement and negotiation of the tax abatement agreement. And so, just, just to clarify, have, have you guys reported anything to the county of the improvements you have made, or the donations that you have made?
Uh, we'd be more than happy to do that. Um, we, we can provide any of that data to the county that, are you talking about philanthropic, um, initiatives of the company?
Any road improvement you've made, or anything like that? You said you've done some stuff, is that what you said, or you're getting improved roads?
Right, yes, ma'am. The, the documentation that I got from, from, uh, Duff and Phelps about Energy Transfer's initiatives came through to me last night. Uh, so I can, I can provide that in writing to you.
He said, you said y'all have already done over $200,000 in road improvement, right?
Yes, sir, yeah, so the KDB plant...
But you're just saying that, we don't, we don't have any knowledge of that, we don't have...
Right.
And the other reason I'm asking is that was asked earlier, and I mean, I believe you. Tell me you did it, I believe you.
We'd love to provide documentation of that, that, that's something that the company's proud of.
And that's a one, one of our county rules.
And it does, and it seems like companies are very proud of that.
And, and I think we should probably make a distinction, if I haven't already, between Energy Transfer's operations as a processor and other companies that operate in Karnes County that get oil and gas out of the ground. These are completely separate, um, endeavors, and, and essentially, they take in a lot of the oil and companies that you were discussing earlier.
Now, the abatement that you're looking at, Mr. Shum, I know Mr. Yammer asked you last time, you come with starting at 100%, is that correct? And he...
No, ma'am, we, uh, we've articulated the terms that, that we've requested and are open for negotiation on page, uh...
Is that where it says Energy Transfer, new job, and new capital investment, KDB and Kennedy plants combined, 22, 100, that one?
Yes, ma'am, yeah, up the top is the...
Abatement percentages per year, year one, 75%, year two, 70%, year three, 65%, year four, 60%, year five, 55%, year six, 50%, year seven, 40%.
year four, 60, year five, 55, year six, 50, year seven, 45, year eight, 40, year nine, 35, and year 10, 34.
That's what we're showing, yes, ma'am.
Is that what you're asking for?
Well, that's the point at which we had to make a request in order to formalize the abatement request. We had to put down specific terms. So this is what we felt would be a fair representation of an abatement for the level at which they're investing capital.
But this is not what we're agreeing to today.
No, ma'am.
We're going to negotiate, is that correct, Ross?
Right, that's correct, right.
When you refer to guidelines in place in reference to, what guidelines are you referring to?
I've got the copy of the actual guideline table here on the same page that you were referencing.
So that's what you're referring to?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And then the full guidelines were the ones that we were, when we contacted Karnes County with the notion of the project back, I think in December of 2011 or January of 2012, those were the active guidelines at the time, is that right, Ross?
Correct.
Okay, yeah. So those were your county guidelines, and we didn't make any amendments or alterations to those.
Can we agree to different guidelines, so lesser percentages than this?
Yes, sir.
That's what it's going in the discussion.
If that's the sentiment of the court, yes, sir.
I'm going to make the motion first.
Can we ask Ross a question real quick? Ross, is there not a public hearing once we agree to some type of negotiation or something? Don't we have, I know you were explaining something to me, but I want these guys to know what it is.
Typically, you have a public hearing before you adopt the guidelines and criteria. You have a public hearing before you create the reinvestment zone, which you've done. And then you have another opportunity for public input before the adoption.
So people will have that opportunity to come in here and do that. Today, we're just working on negotiation, right? The agenda items, just negotiation.
And you have that obligation to notify the other taxing districts, so they can also show up and say whether they take issue with any of it.
It's okay, thanks, Ross. I'm glad that we got that ready, whether the public still has an input and they will restart final life here.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
This is a green ticket, go here.
Right, correct. I'll make the motion for the action authorizing general approval and negotiation of a tax abatement agreement between Karnes County and Energy Transfer for the improvements made to properties located in a 48 reinvestment zone in accordance with the Karnes County Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria and Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code.
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries 5-0. Number 22 is discussion of possible actions authorizing the general approval and negotiation of a tax abatement agreement between Karnes County Energy Transfer for improvements made to property located in a 328 reinvestment zone in accordance with the Karnes County Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria, Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code. Same thing, just negotiation, correct?
Yes, same. I'll make the motion for action authorizing general approval and negotiation of a tax abatement agreement between Karnes County and Energy Transfer for improvements made to the property located in a 328 reinvestment zone in accordance with the Karnes County Tax Abatement Guidelines and Criteria, Chapter 312 of the Texas Tax Code.
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries 5-0. Number 23 is to discuss approved, disapproved, considering services of an architect to advise the county in Phase 1A of courthouse restoration, which is foundation stabilization. And the authors are Sharon Fleming and Pete Yower. Good morning, Sharon.
Good morning.
Evening, noon, whatever we're at now.
Thank you very much for inviting me here, and I'd like to thank Commissioner Yower, who has interested and supported the project. As a way of background directly applicable to this item, I just wanted to comment to you on the success of the project thus far. From the standpoint of THC, we are extremely pleased with the project and it has exceeded our expectations. The general contractor is delivering the project on time and in budget. The subcontractors involved with the project have been working very hard, have gone above and beyond. I'm sure you've heard about the local quarry that's provided sandstone that matches exactly the sandstone that needed replacement on the building. Man gold roofing brought in. Someone speak with us directly, give us assurances that we have the first quality slate being provided on the building, and that's expected to be a 100-year roof. Hull Historical, the wood window manufacturer, is providing a very, very high-quality product to you that was selected for its durability, and we're also confident that that's very good quality. In addition, Lorraine Daley has been working very hard to make things go smoothly on the project. She's looked at every dollar spent, which is in everyone's best interests, and she also has the eyes of a second architect on the project, so she's looking at quality control.
Where's she going?
And then, finally, Louis Fisher, as you know, has been involved with the project for 15 years. To his credit, I think there have been very few surprises on the project. Surprises, as you know, often lead to cost, and so you want to minimize those. And he has provided close oversight. So nothing's perfect, you know, everyone is still working together. The project team is still trying to resolve all the issues until we get to final completion of this phase. But we're confident that you're getting very high-quality product, the highest quality materials in construction, and we think it's also a really good indication of the final product when you look at the appearance of the building, once the scaffolding comes down, which should be very soon. So it was largely due to our confidence and the success of the project moving forward that THC has reviewed the request of the county that was presented at our last commission meeting on July 27th and 28th, to move forward with an additional phase of work that we're calling 1A, which is the foundation repairs. And we have a consensus that that is the right thing to do to move forward. I think Commissioner Yower, you know, was extremely instrumental in that coming to us, and the commission voted on its intent to award up to $450,000 for this next phase of work at a 50-50 match with the county. So what I am tasked with is to help gather the final information for this next phase of work and present that to our commissioners at our October meeting. The commissioners felt that we did need more information, that the proposal was loose and not specific, but we have two and a half months to work together on that. And I suggested that the first step in doing that was that the county agreed that they would need the services of an architect to prepare the construction documents for this phase, and that Daley Spears, as your owner's representative, who would also want involved with this next phase of planning for Phase 1A. So I believe that's where we are in your consideration today. It is recognizing a committee to have an architect work on this next phase. And if I can answer any questions regarding the Phase 1A, and I'm glad.
Of course, this quarter, the court agreed that, you know, we all agreed that we addressed the foundation that we part, Bram Lunn, to do this, so you don't have to give us an evaluation, but we all accepted this. We are pleased that y'all accepted this. We need to do something with the foundation, help us out with the fifth second grant. I think Mr. Lunn and Mr. Hurd will be a good team, they worked diligently to get this prepared for the July 26th presentation, and so I hope to have them continue.
Commissioner, I'd like to suggest that the next step we take, the county, as I understand it, is committing to hiring an architect for this phase. But as far as I know, there haven't been proposals provided to the county, and we're not selecting an architect today. I would like to have a meeting with you to discuss where we go from here and discuss the report that was prepared by Bram Lunn. THC is not providing formal comments on that report. We're in the process of doing that now. So that's part of the work we have ahead, I think, is to look at the project team and the project plans and move forward. So I'd really like to sit down with you and discuss how we do that.
So in other words, you're saying we're not allowed to select an architect today? We have to discuss this before we select an architect, is that what you're saying?
Well, I didn't understand that that was on the agenda for today.
That's what you asked me to do.
Well, it says to commit to the services of an architect.
Where's the letter? I have Pete helping with the sign, I'm sharing, but I have your letter through somewhere. I thought that's what I was doing. Why are you in here?
I'd agree that the first step-
You don't want to do that, that's fine, whatever we want to do. What do you want to do, Pete?
Well, I thought we said we were to select an architect, but that's not what I'm saying.
I would ask that we sit down and we discuss where we are with the documents. I know you've had some concerns about the documents. I think we need to have an understanding of what the teams would provide and what their approach to the foundation repairs would be. That's an issue that's of concern to my office, you know, very, very much so. And so I'd just, I'd like the opportunity to sit down and we can include all the consults and hear what they have to say and follow from that.
So we can't take action on this? No way, either. No action.
Okay. Then we're going to say, discuss approved, disapproved, considering, oh, sorry, Sharon, what'd you say? You're still talking?
No.
Did I skip you?
No. I didn't say anything.
Okay. I can go to number 24?
Yeah.
Discuss approved, disapproved, considering services of liaison to advise the county in Phase 1A of the courthouse restoration, foundation stabilization, that's deep. Do you want to pass on that, Dave?
Yeah, we'll pass on that.
Okay. Number 25, is discuss approved, disapproved, allowing the road bridge administrator Jeff Rodriguez to define requirements and positions that are not needed by CDL, and that's Jeff. Jeff? Now you're out there somewhere.
That's exactly what we discussed the last time. You have to bring that up.
Jeff, come back on here. It's only the CDL issue. I know at one point in time, you had been told, I guess by commissioners' court, that everybody had to have a CDL, and you had positions that didn't require a CDL, and just making your life miserable, so you wanted to kind of be able to define your own requirements.
Yeah, ma'am. And what we'll do, we'll, and you'll find out, the people that want to be the truck drivers and stuff, we can put them in a training program and train them ourselves, and then get them to get their CDLs and stuff, and I think it'll work a lot better. We may have more opportunity to have people walk into the door, asking for them.
Okay, I understand. We just need to clarify.
I'll make the motion to approve, allowing the road bridge administrator Jeff Rodriguez to define the requirements and positions that are not in need of a CDL.
A second.
Who did it?
Who got it?
Carl. All in favor, say aye. Any opposition? None, motion carries 5-0. Number 26, discuss approved, disapproved, amending the fiscal year 2012 road bridge department in an amount of $137,527.32, that's Jeff.
Something like on the material, fuel, fuel prices, we're doing a lot more than what we've done last year with diesel or fuel. I'm going to up on the fuel. On the material, I'm going to up the material quite a bit, because we get hit with a disaster like we've got Hurricane today, and now if we get hit with it, I want to be prepared for it. We don't use the money, the money will go back to the, back to the general fund, so that's what kind of, it just kind of gave us a little bumper to survive, but if we don't use the money, it'll go back. Just don't want to keep coming back in here for that due.
That's what you're doing right now, this is what you're on right now.
This should getting through the end of September is what he's anticipating, so that has to come by.
Now, is this material, destructive materials, or just an amendment to get to the end of the year, or what is it?
It's to get us through the end of the year.
We need to plan the public now.
It's up to the fiscal year.
There you go, but it's everything.
Not to the end of the year.
Yes, the fiscal year.
Like, right here, Mr. Busman, right here, because I was asked by the public on this 26 here, that it doesn't have anything saying for operating expenses or anything like that. I don't mind making the motion for it, that's what Jeff needs, but the public asked me, is it okay for us to make that motion, so it doesn't designate what it's actually for in the line item?
And it's also require that you terminate the, convert to be a name of the.
In emergency or not unforeseen circumstances for the betterment and the well-being of the community.
One or the other has to be done within the motion. And we broke it down for, just cut some-
Well, I know, I know, I don't have a problem with it, Jeff, what I'm saying is, the public asked me that it doesn't, it doesn't describe it in the line item, that it's for operating expenses. They were asking me what it's for, and I actually told them, I'm not really sure, I couldn't answer them.
Everybody agrees.
I make the motion to approve, amending the FY 2012 road bridge special budget in the amount of unforeseen $137,527.32.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposition?
It's all right, we make it without it.
I would suggest that-
Do the amendment stand unforeseen? Frankly, would you amend it?
He said that. But I would suggest this be filed in the minutes, yes.
Just follow it with the form.
You find it in the motion for operating, every day operating expenses. You don't know what it is. I forgot about that one. I do want to make sure-
No, we said it was for the, no, it's for the, please follow that up.
Right. They needed to have a line item, description.
Okay. So number 27 is to discuss approved, disapproved, amending the fiscal year 2012 road bridge special budget in an amount of $50,014.23.
That is for the material, this kind of, if, you know, we get caught in a hurricane or something, I want to be, you know, where we can go out and buy material and use it.
Now, is this a-
And this is, this is just a carryover.
Okay.
I just, if something happens.
Again, if it's not used, it'll remain in the road bridge special account.
Yes, I just wanted to show that, you know, if something happens, we'll have the money, you know, it's, it'll stay there.
I'm going to make the motion to approve, amending the fiscal year 2012 road bridge special budget in the amount of $50,414.23. It's for unforeseen materials. Is that defined in it?
A second.
A second.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposition?
Do you second my second?
Number 28 is discussion of what type of an agreement was made between the city of Karnes City and the county in regard insurance payments for the jaws of life. The authors are myself, Charlie Mulligan, Larry Pippin. Charlie's six, but Mr. Pippin's here. I talked to Charlie earlier this morning, he's not feeling real good.
Oh, he's not going to make it, Judge.
To the meat.
To meat.
So anyway-
If you ask me if I was going to make it, I'd probably say no. I hope Charlie makes it.
What I got, Mr. Pippin, I got a call from Charlie about insurance for the jaws of life. And Charlie gave me a scenario that maybe back in 1999, we had agreed to pay $700 a month insurance to the city to do with the jaws of life. Then in 2004, he said that we had agreed to pay $1,200 a year for insurance for the jaws of life. And he had said at what time was, is that the county, the county agreed to that, so they would not have to buy a jaws of life.
Or maintain it.
Or maintain it. And then what ended up happening is he got a grant for the jaws of life. And so he was able to purchase, I guess, a pretty good piece of equipment or something. And he said that we'd had this agreement for a couple of years to be able to pay this $1,200. And that now that we're not paying it, so I asked Brenda and Lisa and Carol to go back in minutes and see if they could find an agreement. We've not been able to find an agreement.
Of the $100?
Of the $1,200 a year, or the $700. We did not find either one. They said we'd made payments. Luana said, and, so, but I'm just telling you what I heard before, and then you give us your side, so we all know what everybody heard.
Okay, what the county has done since I've been here is paid $100 a month for jaws of life maintenance. There had also been $1,200 a year for jaws of life insurance that's been paid up until, I believe, this last year, the current 2011 policy that you have, or 2012. I had Leanna contact the city of Karnes City to request an itemization of their insurance showing that the jaws of life insurance was $1,200 a year, to substantiate what we're paying. Because we don't get anything for the maintenance costs that we contribute monthly of a hundred dollars a month. What I got back from the city was a copy of their property insurance schedule that shows mobile equipment effective date ten, one, eleven through ten, one, twelve, and the limit of the property insured is two hundred and ninety-two thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars, and the annual contribution or premium is twelve hundred and one dollars. My question was, what's included in that mobile equipment? Because I cannot believe that the jaws of life is insured for two hundred and ninety-two thousand. It sounds to me like we're paying the insurance for all the city's mobile equipment with that twelve hundred dollar contribution.
I'm new here. I've been in the state of years. I have the idea. I've heard what she's made, but that's not a concern. I, I, I kind of agree with your county attorney. I mean, county auditor, that's that point. I'm sorry.
I've got lots of titles.
I didn't make them. I'm sorry about that.
Thank you.
But I'll have to agree with her. Again, there's no itemization. And I questioned Meli again this morning. I questioned Charles this morning that, you know, I have a, I have a hard time getting up before this court and arguing with y'all that, yes, that the interest policy is twelve hundred dollars on the jaws of life. I didn't know that you were paying another hundred dollars on maintenance. I didn't know that until now. And since I can't prove it, and I have no idea what has transpired, number one, I don't believe in motions by this court or motions by the city council that should be carried forward from year to year. It should be some type of an agreement specifying exactly what's going to be done for how long, what the terms are going to be, is there going to be increase in bid, what percentage, and provide proof to both parties so you know what the cost is for. We don't have that. And so I'm going to, I'm going to ask the commissioners' court not to approve nothing. The city will pay the twelve hundred dollars. I'm not worried about that. Just, I don't have to worry about itemizing statements or being the board commissioners' court again. To sell something that to me was passed by Judge Kendall at, at his discretion, I guess, many years ago. I don't have the proof. I'm not going to provide the proof. I'm not going to waste it. Many hours of my time, I may start trying to backtrack, you know, for the last seven, eight years. We can afford it. So I, I don't want an approval. We'll assume the twelve hundred dollars, so.
But we are still hungry with the twelve hundred dollars of the maintenance.
Now, that I got to look at. That, that I didn't know.
We've been doing that for years. I remember that.
Are we?
Yes, monthly, we remit them a hundred dollars for the maintenance.
This, this is insurance that we're talking about. I, I'm really not clear on whether that would be replacement or liability in case, I mean, you're cutting doors and roofs off of vehicles.
It's on the equipment. It's not on the people operating it.
Okay, but is that insurance in case you injure somebody with that?
No, it's insuring a piece of equipment.
Yes, insuring that piece of equipment.
See, we carry it under light bellicy. You know, my concern is if a rescue truck and the jaws of life goes out into the county, it still becomes our responsibility. It's no longer a responsibility of the county. And I don't agree with that. Even though the same taxpayers support both entities, but still they're completely separated. Somehow, I'm not sure county attorney can review this, or you Barbara, but I think some type of insurance should be maintained by you to cover the city liability in case somebody does get hurt or some accident takes place where our vehicle coverage stays within corporate limits and does not cover anybody outside of corporate limits. We'll, like I said, take our twelve hundred, but we prefer that you insure the city in case something does happen, that we're not going to be liable for any accident of a person in the county with a jaws of life.
So then that also could pertain to the fire trucks themselves when they did-
Yes, when they cross-
Gentlemen, this-
By law, our fire trucks, they may hurt the city. Should only leave, up to city limits. Anything above that, they should be covered by the county. So if y'all want to sit down and negotiate that, we know it's a much-
We had, we had those, I'm sorry, Larry. When I first got in there in two thousand, we had that, that same thing, and we stepped into about these same walking grounds right here, what the city and the county wanted this, wanted that, wanted this, wanted that. We ended up doing it just what we had, keep on going. Because really honestly, it became an argument because the city said, I'm going to do this. County said, I'm going to do this. I'm going to take away this. I've been through that so many years already to work. We can put, well, we're going to do this, or we're going to take away this. We're going to do this, or we're going to take away that. And that just comes out to nothing but an argument, and it's not understood. I've been through this so many times. I went to the city for years before part of you were here too. And I went over there and it was the same thing. And they were like, well, we're going to take this if you don't give us this. Well, we can too. And it just becomes, we get no words with it.
Yeah, I can assure this commissioners' court, as long as I'm here, I'm not going to ever threaten that if you don't pay us this, we're not going to provide you any type of protection for your systems out of the county. That will never happen as long as I remain here. Again, we're here to provide protection for everybody in Corn City County. Since I can't prove nothing, I prefer observing the twelve hundred. Then I'll come back at a later day and say, okay, how are we going to, how are you going to cover the rescue truck as well as fire trucks in case an accident does occur? And meanwhile, I'll bring my proof from my city attorney, as well as from our insurance company to say, okay, this is your limit liability, et cetera, et cetera, with no threats. Just sit down.
You know, I understand. Yeah, and I didn't say it was with you anytime that you've been here and everything. It's just that I was, I went through it and everything, and we never got any word. I don't know. I can't re, what he says, I will meet with you and I'll kind of, I'll remember what exactly it was. And it was just like, well, if you're going to do this, then I'm going to charge you for this, and I'm going to charge you for that. I don't know if Luana remembers that, but I had a situation with the city like that, that, well, I'm going to, I want this. And I, the county said, well, James, well, tell them we want this. And it came out to where nobody got nothing. We just ended up the same way as we were, but everybody was happy.
So what we're going to do, Mr. Pippin, is you're going to come back and tell us how much you think we should, we should pay for utilizing your equipment and the unincorporated area.
No, ma'am. I'm going to advise you what, what we can do based on what our city attorney tells me, what is our maximum limit.
Okay.
And also with our insurance carrier, what they're going to tell me, you know, what type of responsibility should we assume and you assume. And if this court has no objections, I, I don't mind talking to you, county judge. We'll share our experiences and then she can put it on the, Mr. Pippin, sorry.
Well, I'm sure to say that, you know, it could be, well, please correct me if I am, but those jaws of life, if and when they're used, the majority of the time, it's probably outside the city limits of Corn City.
Probably not.
I haven't seen a real bad accident within the city limits. Usually they're out.
Don't tease anybody, Carl.
Yeah, especially now.
So I, I don't see any reason for this court to change. I mean, what are we talking about? Two hundred dollars a month, Luana?
Hundred dollars a month, Carl.
We talking about a hundred dollars a month?
For insurance and a hundred dollars for repairs and maintenance.
That would make it two hundred, right, Judge?
Yes, sir. Yeah, but for the interest, it's just a hundred. We're already paying the maintenance. The maintenance isn't a question.
Well, I don't see any reason to change it. We've been doing it all these years. And, and it believe me, if somebody on this court gets in an accident, they're going to want the jaws of life.
Well, they aren't saying the jaws of life isn't going to respond if there's an accident.
I think you're missing out on the point. The thing, if we need is, when any liability occurs or an accident occurs outside of the city limits, they need to be covered, as do we. And I think that's what we're talking about.
That's all. That's very simple. As far as like your, like our department, you know, they fight fires, both in the county and the city. Kennedy, they don't give whatever. We've asked nothing from, from those people. Our work must comp, we pay the work must comp on the volunteer department. That's eight thousand dollars a year. We pay all their coverage. We got insurance. We're not asking for that. All I'm asking for is that some type of responsibility should be on this county if something happens. Instead of us being sued, that we should share.
Shouldn't that be covered by the emergency services district out of their budget rather than each entity covering something?
Also, do intergovernmental agreements have to be covered?
To me, it's a very simple solution. It does not need to be complicated. It should be very simple.
Bring him back to us, Mr. Pippin.
Yes, ma'am.
But whenever we bring him back, then we're going to have to talk with the other, with Kennedy and Rungy too, that they have part of them too.
And Paul City.
Paul City.
Angel.
Angel. So I mean, it's not that, it's not that simple.
Well, that's why I said, why doesn't the emergency services district pay it out of their tax revenues that they get?
I understand. Exactly. Because it gets complicated. Because we can do it for one, but as soon as you leave and we're happy to help you, bam, we get everything. So we have to get it here now and figure it out. Because it's not just Corn City. It's all the other entities too.
I agree with you. It involves everybody.
Okay, so we're passing number twenty-nine, Mr. Pippin.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Number thirty-two is you, Brenda.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay.
Nothing, it's- Okay, I'm here to report on taxes collected for the county institutes for July. For the county, current month's taxes collected, twelve thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Year to date, that's four million, one twenty-two, excuse me, four million, one hundred and twenty-two dollars, excuse me, four million, one hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, seventy-seven dollars, sixty-four cents. Collection rate of ninety-eight point four eight percent. Delinquent taxes for the month of July, four thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-three cents. Year to date, seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars and twenty-one cents, with a collection rate of thirty-three point seven percent. That's the delinquent taxes for the county. Road and Bridge, the month of July, one thousand, seven hundred and eleven dollars and seventy-two cents. Year to date, five hundred and seventy-one thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars and seventy-seven cents. Collection rate of ninety-eight point five percent. Delinquent rolls, the month of July, Road and Bridge, three hundred and ninety-four dollars and fifty-nine cents. Year to date, six thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars and sixty-two cents. Collection rate on the delinquent, thirty-five point one eight nine two percent. Rural Fire District, the month of July, collected one thousand, fifty-two dollars and seventy-six cents. Year to date, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and thirty-one cents. A collection rate of ninety-eight point four percent. The delinquent rolls for the month of July, two hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety-five cents. Year to date, three thousand, five fifty-eight, eighty-three. A collection rate of forty-one point one seven six four percent.
Thank you, Brenda. Next item is payment bills.
Nothing out of the ordinary in this cycle of bills. Total disbursements to be paid are one hundred and twenty-four thousand, ninety-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. This does not include all the bills that were listed as currently due on the road bridge budget amendments. Those will be paid in a separate cycle since the court did approve the amendments, but they will also be issued today.
I have listed them. I didn't see anything out of the ordinary, but we don't use.
I make the motion to pay meal.
I say it.
All in favor, say aye.
All right.
Do you all sign this one please? Any opposed? None. Motion carries five zero. The next item on the agenda is a report of five fees and money collected. Carol, I have yours. You just want me to read you the final number. Fifty-one thousand, fifty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. Denise?
Yes, I don't have, I don't have my-
Do you have that, Carol, with me? I might need to sign it. Go ahead, Denise.
Um, for the criminal tax, it was nine thousand, one hundred and fifty that I collected. Pre-sentence investigation, pre-trial felony probation, five thousand, eighty-two, fifty-one. Criminal fees, three thousand, six hundred thirteen and sixty-seven cents. On my civil side, we collected seventeen thousand, sixty-four dollars and two cents.
Can you give it to Carol, please?
I'm sorry?
Can you give your original to Carol?
Sure. And from AG, one thousand, two hundred and fifty, three hundred and twenty-four cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob, you want to read yours?
For the month of July, my office collected two thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars, twenty cents. Hot checks that went to merchants. We collected nine hundred and sixty-six dollars in court costs. For a year to date, six thousand, four hundred and seventy-six, six dollars and eighty-nine cents. On the money that was back to the merchants, a year to date, twenty-five, one hundred and seventy dollars and sixty-two cents. That's pretty much it. You need a copy of this too, Carol?
Carol does. Just, just Daisy or Kathy, do you all have one? Please, you just have that front page, Daisy?
I have the total report for July.
Can you give it to Carol, please? Okay, that's okay. We'll call. Can you give one to Carol, Carl?
Okay, I believe if you'll just flip through, say the total collected, the cost listing for the month of July was twenty-three thousand, two hundred and ten cents.
Thank you. What page was that, Kathy?
Uh, about page four or five.
Page five?
Yeah. There's the deposit listing report.
Thank you, Kathy. Um, Daisy? Carl, thank you. Daisy, did you make a copy of Carol?
I'll give Carol one. If you go to page twelve, the last page, my office collected thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars and fifty-five cents, but was retained in the county, twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one, ninety-two cents, but was dispersed, eleven thousand, five hundred and eighty-two, seventy-three. And that's for the month of July.
Thank you, Daisy.
Any questions?
What is that? The hundred and eighty-sixth is the count of, of tickets? That was the-
No. My total cases filed for the month of July was two hundred and twenty-one.
Thank you, Daisy. I got to tell you, you're really busy here. Are you having to spend, drive more miles and you get killed out a lot more?
Well, we, we all are with, with the increase of fatalities in the county. Not just myself, but the other JPs are having to come out more to do inquests, to do magistrations, to do these blood wards that we're now doing for the DWIs. So it's not just myself. It's the other judges that. And we're having to travel extra miles because of all the fatalities occurring in the county. And I may, I may have to go all the way to Gillette, depending on who's on call. Judge Castle lives in Rungy. If she's on call and there's an accident in, in Gillette, she'll have to drive all the way to Gillette.
You all currently don't turn in any kind of expenses for mileage or anything?
No, we at one time did have that, but it wasn't included in our, it's not included in our salary. But whenever there's a raise, that does not, it's not included, what we were getting for, for travel allowance. That's not included whenever we do get a raise.
So that's been, that's been good for the county in the sense that you're bringing in thirty-five thousand dollars a month, but you personally, your salary is kind of getting hit, hit hard with gasoline.
Yeah, with the price of gas, yes.
Geminol, Niva did not retire for the fourth. We will get that later. You just keep another cash away. So, special projects.
In my report, partner. The month of July, eighteen determination development permit applications received for four hundred and fifty. In July, onset suite facility applications, there were seven. Permit total was three thousand, two hundred. Inspector's fee, one thousand, two hundred and forty. TCEQ's portion is seventy dollars. The county portion out of all of that is one thousand, eight hundred and ninety. I also will not be able to attend the budget workshop that I have my permission.
Did you make a copy for your report for Carol, please? And for Mr. Juan? Does Carol have one? All of you guys have any with Paul?
Well, I want to, you know, the same.
I usually don't have a report. I have a report this week, just according to local government code. Anytime I collect money in the auditors, my report for the last two thousand, two hundred and twenty dollars for the county. I usually don't collect money, but anytime I do, we'll get the, done as a perp to the federal, like the, there you go. Will you please follow that, Carl? Number thirty-six, a report from Road and Bridge, Jeff. Jeff, where'd you go? Okay, so let's go, let's move on. Chief, don't worry about it. Let's move on to the other.
We already had my report in your packets. As mentioned earlier, the treasurer's report and mine agreed. You'll notice we have one further debt requirement during this fiscal year. The payment was due tomorrow, and it is the offices-on-the-square certificates of obligation payment. The last page is the items of interest. Total county funds available as of July thirty-first, eleven million, nine hundred and forty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and forty-five cents. Total funds invested as of July thirty-first, twelve million, two hundred and sixty-four thousand, fifty-eight dollars and nineteen cents. Where you can add and subtract, that shows that our cash on hand balance is overdrawn.
Where you can add and subtract, that shows that our cash on-hand balance is overdrawn by $316,308.74. We have the money in the accounts in the bank. It's just that we're over-invested at the moment, or as of July 31st. We recoup that because our sales tax deposit was over $811,000 for June. We've submitted our third request for reimbursement from the Historical Commission on the Courthouse Restoration Phase One in the amount of $54,811.76. Sales tax receipts, October 1st, 2011 through July 31st, 2012, $4,672,587.51. The same period, sales tax receipts, not the same period, the previous period. October 1st, 2010 through July 31st, 2011, $1,711,290.70. So we've had an increase over fiscal year 11 of $2,686,930.5. And again, as I mentioned, sales tax received in August for June 2012 was $811,848.33.
Thank you, Lwana.
Thank you, ma'am.
Carl, you're next.
I don't have anything to say.
Carl, I want to ask you just really quick, whose name, you texted me yesterday about the guy, about the trash. Ms. Moise asked me about the trash committee. I know she's on it. Did you develop one?
I thought it was Noise and Dust, actually, 'cause you were calling TCEQ.
I did, but the trash part, is Jeffrey gone again? I reported the trash part to Jeff, that there was trash on the county road.
Yeah, well, last time I checked, we didn't have any volunteers, and.
I think we did appoint you. Ms. Moise, did you get appointed?
I, uh, yes, and then there were two of us, and then.
I know one of the pink ladies.
Then, then everybody else. We had a whole committee ready, but I don't know, you know, how to be.
Ms. Parks.
But you know what? Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, this trash issue has not gone away, because Sunday, my husband and I went out to the ranch. I took a picture of 199, where they had dumped a television, one of the creatures, one of them rode around my place. So we're still getting TVs dumped and trash.
That's exactly why I'm having that household hazardous waste collection event. Exactly. But where that left me off, uh, when we first started that, Judge, if you'll remember, I wanted to buy some trailers, and you were totally opposed to that. You can't put trash on an open trailer because it blows off when you're driving to the.
Now y'all are.
So you have to have like a big birdcage.
What happened to the committee report? That's all I'm asking you about.
Well, Judge, I'm just saying, I, I've got no cooperation from you on this.
That's, that's not true, but if that's, if you feel comfortable with that, I'm not gonna, that's just.
Well, you didn't even sign my, uh, my grant application.
Pete, can you, can you go to, James was the ma, uh, the person there that, that you have to follow procedure. Pro Tim has to sign it while he's here. Go ahead.
It was a, oh, in my defense, that was a confusion there like that, and we didn't know if I could sign that.
Uh, you signed out everything else.
That, but that was before I had the permission to sign.
No, no. According to local government code.
I don't, I don't wanna start that on an argument, but in, in my defense, Judge.
I understand your defense, but.
Yeah, in my defense, I was told to wait, I was told to wait for you till you get here.
You have full, you have my full authority when I'm gone.
Okay, now I know that 100%.
And measures court. You can't go to a GIV.
I know, but after that, after, and not, not to argue with you, I wouldn't know.
You have my full.
After that happened and I didn't sign that paperwork, that's when you told me, no, any, anytime I'm gone, you're pro Tim, full authority.
You have full.
That's when I verbally had it from you.
You have full.
That was in my defense, 'cause I don't wanna sit here thinking that.
It's in the local government code. You have full authority. Go ahead, Pete.
Well, anyway, anyway, I have like, excuse me, but like several emails back and forth to Carl that we were supposed to have needs to get this on, and it's, we, after we had the trash can thing came out, we never did any, we never, the committee. Pete, I think Pete and somebody else were still waiting to get somebody in the media, not somebody in the committee. Pete, who was your representative for the trash committee?
Mr. Martin, I should have.
Was it Mr. Groh?
And who was Jen? Was Mr. Rosales Jen's the one?
Yes, yes.
Tracy, that was yours?
Ms. Parks, Ms. Parks.
Pete, I, I don't.
That's his. So we had the people, we just never.
I would, uh, I called Mr. Yower several times and he informed me. He didn't have anybody in his precinct.
Oh, they, they'd come forward and say we had a Mr. Cole.
Mr. Cole.
All right, then, I'll be glad to start on the committee. I, I'm just gonna want to do that, except that I, I'm, I'm, I could be an actor standing.
I think this goes back to the leadership, Judge. I mean, it's not.
That's a math.
We can't form a committee for every single little thing. I mean, for trash, for this, or that.
And you shouldn't agree to.
For furniture, for everything.
You shouldn't agree to do it.
For the jail.
We need to do something. Pete, go ahead. We gotta go forward.
And next report, uh.
I think you just got it.
Mr. Bobo said he's true. Uh, we got some electrical parts come in. I called Fruder and Laura, and they were here. Man came and picked them up. They have light valves to put in, and a few things they can do. I'll call them again today.
James?
Uh, the truck that we bought, Rover, that I went and took it to, and Sierra Ford, they're working on it right now. Good, I took it. It had two cracked rotors on it, but it got it for a good price, but it didn't have two cracked rotors, a couple of other issues. Got the oil change on it, creased up, got it all. Everything's going good, and then me and Carl have been working on the tire situation. He was gonna, I called, what was it, Pierce?
Jerry Pierce.
Jerry Pierce on that day, and he told me I couldn't do anything since I wasn't the one that was with the DeGola. It was Carl, and I told him, "Well, I can go ahead and make that, you know, I wanna make that decision." He said, "No, you need to talk to Carl, 'cause Carl's the only one that can make that decision." So I went to Carl, and Carl's been taking care of that.
What is that?
For the tire, for the tire pickup. We have, they have, poor Jerry had, right, Pierce, what do you, he has $4,800 there. That's at least two trucks, trucks to come and pick up all the tires there. But I wasn't authorized myself to do it because Carl's the main one, the representative of the.
I sit on the.
Cars County. You sit on the board, but for Corns County.
So you're representing a board?
Of DeGola, what is it?
Every county is represented by a member of commissioners' court, whether it be a judge or.
Daisy, do you have anything? I think you beat your permits to go. Number 37 is to discuss, approve, just approve amending the failure to appear program offered by the driver's license division under the transportation code, chapter 706. What that is, is we have a grant for the failure of appear program that we have to reinstate every year. It's in this package. I did not put it in that package, because it's just an amendment, and it's, all it is, is re-upping us for another year, and that's all the amendment is.
Okay, I'll make the motion to approve amended the failure to appear program offered by the driver's license division under transportation code, chapter 706, architects of the Department of Public Safety Enforcement and Compliance Division.
Okay, we're gonna move backwards?
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I was gonna go back to the rest of the agenda. Uh, all in, have you seconded it?
I am.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. In the opposition, none. Motion carries five to zero.
Very, very good.
I'm trying to get this agenda. Number, no, just, Carol, can we just get number six and number seven to the end of the month?
Seven?
No action.
Just take no action until the next meeting.
That's what I'm saying. So would you be, but you, are you okay by me putting it on at the end of the month?
I won't be offended.
Okay. Let's go to number eight. Acknowledgement on record that the San Antonio Food Bank will be in Fall City at the Holy Trinity Catholic Church located on 211 East Meyer Street in Fall City. That's gonna be on August 20th, 2012, at 10:30 a.m. Number 38 is to adjourn.
And just a friendly reminder, we have a budget workshop.
What'd you say, Lwana?
Friendly reminder, we have a budget workshop this afternoon.
The fact is it.